...meeting Monday, July 28, 2014, 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Gordon Eggleton.
Here.
Henry Quant.
Here.
Wes Ryan.
Here.
Chester Nurekis.
Here.
Gary Ellingson is absent and excused, and Mayor Dick Anderson.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, states of America, which sustains one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for tuning in tonight and being in the chambers. It's always nice to see warm bodies, but we know you're watching either on cable or through the Internet. Tonight, our first order of business is comments from citizens present. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. That's a conclusion of the agenda item. A councillor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. Seems that no one took the opportunity to sign up. However, that doesn't preclude us from asking if there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and make a comment. Seeing none, we will move on then to our next agenda item, which is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda calendar consists of items of a repeat or routine nature, considered under a single action. A councillor may remove a consent item, agenda item, for separate consideration upon request. The agenda consists of, one, Public Arts Committee request. Public Arts Committee request, bus shelter painting contest. Number two, fiscal year 2014-15 vehicle purchase recommendations. Number three is Head to Bay Trail Grant, local agency agreement. Number four is Nell Scott Construction Engineering Inspection Amendment, additional services. And number five is Schooner Creek Crossing Construction Service Agreement. Any items wish to be removed, to consider separately?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I'd like all five items removed.
Okay. With that, then, why don't we deal with each one individually, and start off with Public Arts Committee request? And thank you, Sandy.
Good evening. Sandy, selected artists will paint. How many artists will be selected?
One per shelter, so the first round here, it'll be six.
Six of them.
Yeah. Presumably, somebody could offer to do it in a team way, too, but it would be, then it would be more, but we're anticipating one per shelter.
Okay. And the art will be painted on plexiglass or plywood. What size do you anticipate that being?
Whatever, what fits. There's a space apparently between, in some of the bus shelters between, and we're trying to get a substance that will fit in between. If we can't do that, we may need to protect it in some other way. So I know that some other communities that have done exactly the same thing have used like quarter-inch plywood, something like that. That's actually easier than plexi.
Have you?
Quarter-inch plywood.
Quarter-inch plywood.
Yeah. So we'll find-
Be protected from the weather?
Yeah. What we'll do after they're painted is we will make sure that whatever they're painted on is sealed, as well as we can get it sealed, and that the painting itself is protected from graffiti and other elements as much as we can. And that's, what might be, that we will require the artists to use special kinds of paints that also are resistant to that. So we're still in the process of researching what's the best way to do that.
Yeah. If it's possible to use plexiglass, it seems to me that that would be a preferable choice over plywood in terms of lasting and weathering.
Probably. It does have to be roughed up in order for it to happen, so that can cause problems.
Just putting it out there.
Before it's painted, it has to be roughed up.
Okay. Do you anticipate a grant being asked for from the V.C. committee?
Yeah, we actually have done that, and they've actually agreed, subject to the approval of Mr. Hawker and our city attorney. They have agreed to match what is in this memo, so that there can be larger prizes, which presumably will attract better art and more, at least a bigger pool of people that they can select from.
Thank you.
Mayor, I noticed the video's been back on here for a couple minutes at least.
Any other questions regarding this?
I just have a comment. I know we've had to do some stuff with plywood in this environment, and one of the things that we discovered was that marine-grade plywood, while it's expensive, properly sealed will last 15 years.
Great.
It's very hard. It is thicker, it is a lot more expensive, but if you're looking for durability, certainly I would investigate that, rather than just regular plywood.
I'll do that. My plan also is to talk to some of the other jurisdictions that have actually done that to see, or done this kind of a program, to see what the longevity is and what their experiences have been, so that we don't have to repeat their problems.
Cindy, while we're on that, I guess when I read it, I was a little concerned of plywood, whatever type, of the tunneling effect, closing in and losing visibility out of the bus shelters. Thus, the plexiglass, I would hope, would be a little more visibility?
It may be, but what we're going to do is have this done on the back side, so it'll face, when you're sitting in, or standing in the shelter, you can look at it.
Oh, I see.
But the picture itself will, the painting itself will face out toward the road, and we're not going to have anything on the sides that would obscure visibility, because that's not safe for the people waiting for the bus, or for the bus driver to know if anybody's there.
Good. That's helpful. Other questions? Oh, I did have one. Reading the write-up, talked about the Art Committee having a budget of $17,000. I guess it was a technical question. Mr. Hawker, the budget gets funded as public projects get done, not that it's a great amount of money, but I'm assuming the $17,000 isn't in that account presently, because the projects haven't been approved or that would fund it?
Correct.
Is that a problem, or are we, is the committee able to dip into this approved budget without the funds actually having been?
Well, yeah, if we know they're coming, and there's a certain amount of predictability to that.
Right.
There were funds left over from last fiscal year, too.
Yeah.
And that's in that balance.
And that's, I just wanted, as we move down the road and go from there. Great. Entertain a motion, then?
So moved. We accept the request by the Public Arts Committee.
Seconded.
We have a motion with a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, voice vote, please.
Sprague.
Yes.
Nurekis.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Eggleton. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sandy. This is the Vehicle Purchase Recommendations. Mr. Nurekis?
Yes. Mr. Hawker, I note that the 2014 F-150 is $28,423, and the 2015 F-450 is $28,525. That seems like an extraordinarily good deal on that 450.
Well, it doesn't have the body. The body is separate on that. That just comes with a frame on the back end.
Okay.
Okay? And then, this is, this is replacing a flatbed, which has limited utility for us. When we load it up, then we have to unload it. This unit would have a dump body installed, which is an additional $14,000.
Yes, yes. That's the only question I had.
Okay. I did notice, Mr. Hawker, the Water Department is, I'm assuming, an addition to fleet, and the Street Department is a replacement. Sit.
I think you're reading that because the surplus designation. I do not believe that's accurate. Lila, can you confirm what I'm saying? I thought both of these were replacements.
I believe the water truck is in addition, so that one was not a replacement.
Okay. Well, I stand corrected.
Which one?
I didn't, I didn't read the memo that was prepared.
Well, one shows a surplus vehicle, and the other one doesn't.
Yep.
Somehow, I apologize, I missed that, because usually when we increase the fleet, I'm on top of that.
You're okay with this one, no?
Well, I'm okay for now. I'm okay with buying a new one. I will have on my list before we leave tonight to find out what's going to happen to the old one, because I'm very, I want to be very frugal on increasing our fleet size.
Good. I do note, the Street Department wanted over 97 miles, 1,000 miles, so clearly time, so it's on the replacement. Any other questions on the vehicles? Entertain a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Hang on, Lila.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Mr. Nurekis, Head to Bay Trail Grant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On page one, Lila, it looks like we're looking at an option of treated wood on micro piles. Is there any way to replace that treated wood with Trex, with plastic wood?
You know, I can talk to the engineers about that.
We've got plastic decking on the boardwalk in Cutler City and in Taft, I believe.
Yes, we can take a look at that during the design.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. And on page two of the memo, project cost control will be important. How do we, how do we manage that? How do we?
Well-
Either get out of control?
When we have the bids on this project, it was bid, actually, once, once before, when we were doing the Head to Bay Trail, and it came in at 400, I believe, $425,000 was the total, and we didn't have enough funding, you know, to finish it. And so I believe it's going to come in at a reasonable price, just compared to that pricing. And then we can do an option for the wood and the Trex and see what that is in the, in the bid. So we'll work closely with ODOT on that part of it.
Thank you. And on page one of the agreement, the local agency agreement, Terms of the Agreement, last two words in the second sentence of that Terms of Agreement, "The project includes a single-span bridge over Spring Lake, comma, bicycle pedestrian boardwalk connecting existing sidewalks on West Devils Lake Road, and new grading in American Disabilities Act sidewalk ramps." It sounds to me like we've got three projects there, Lila.
Yeah, they may have left something.
We've got a bridge, a boardwalk, and ramps.
Okay. Because what the agreement covers is the intersection improvement at Surf and 22nd, and then the boardwalk.
Mm-hmm. And no bridge.
And no bridge.
Okay.
So I'll note that.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Any other questions for the council?
Thank you.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Motion to approve. We have a motion with a second. Roll call, please.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Nurekis.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Hawker, perhaps you could answer this for me. This is Nell Scott Construction Engineering Inspection Amendment?
Yes.
And on the second page, in the recommendation, last three sentences, for the portion of the relocation work in ODOT's contract not to exceed $18,000. So we're paying $18,000 as a piece of ODOT's contract?
Well, it's our, it's our pipe.
It's our pipe.
So, I mean, we want it installed right. We're going to have to live with it.
Okay. That was it for me.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve with a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Quant.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Nurekis.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ms. Reed, may I have your help, please? Construction services for the FEMA Schooner Creek Boring Project. The background section, Madam Engineer, including daily inspections, second to the last paragraph, somebody from our staff will be doing that? Somebody who's qualified, presumably?
We initially, one of our staff was going to be there on a daily basis, and while he won't be available to be there, we will have that daily presence covered, but we'll have the oversight from this engineer from PBS, who will be attending more regularly than first, than they first identified. So we'll, we'll be covered, but staff will cover the dailies, yeah.
We're expecting five visits from the, from the contractor, are we?
Correct. Yeah, this was what the basis of the construction services, these were the assumptions that the scope was based on.
And how long will this project go? Do you, can you say?
Well, these boring projects tend to go rather quickly. Yeah, I mean, once we get-
Four weeks, eight weeks?
The projects, we're anticipating eight weeks as a, is the duration, yes.
And bottom paragraph, authority, end of the second sentence, "City manager authorizes follow-on work to avoid increased costs." What sort of follow-on work? What does that mean?
Well, PBS was, we also have a contract with PBS to do technical advising and assist with the design. We did the design in-house, but we initially had a contract with PBS for almost $25,000 to do CAD assistance and to provide technical advice. And so we wanted to use that same engineer. Then, when, when our in-house staff wasn't able to stamp the plans, PBS stepped up and made the plans their own. They became engineer of record. So they have done enough in the project to, they spent that $25,000, and now we're asking that those same folks be involved in the construction inspection services.
That language is actually from our public contracting code. It's the exemption that is being utilized. Thank you. In the last page, under Budget, the city's 25% share, that's 100, I figured it was 125,250, $125,250, is that right? 25% of 541,000?
Actually, I lost my sheet, my, I lost the report that... So, yeah, what I didn't, I'm sorry, council, council, I don't have the, that number, but I'm sure you've done the math correctly. So it is 25%, whatever that is, a 541,017.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions? Hearing none. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Ryan.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Nurekis.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. We have a special order of business. Mr. Requested rate increase from North Lincoln Sanitary Service. Tina, Ms. French. Annie?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I have a PowerPoint presentation in the middle of the sky, I was told. My name is Tina French from North Lincoln Sanitary. This is my husband and business partner, Lon French, and I am here to do the annual State of the Trash address and hopefully show you a PowerPoint, but I just don't think the project, there it is, honey. Oh.
It'll come up.
I'm beginning to see it. There it is.
All right.
Ta-da.
And technical advisor.
Ooh!
Yeah.
Yeah, and definitely technical advisor. I come before you once a year to talk about rates and also to just kind of talk about solid waste in general, and let you know what we've been up to in the previous year and what we're looking forward to. And so, all this run through this, feel free to stop me anytime if you have any questions. Current participation rates for recycling have remained pretty steady. We have an increase from 2013, which is to be expected. Our overall tonnage is up, garbage is up as well, recycling is up, but the economy is up. So I, we expected to see an increase. The one thing that we were happy to see is quite an increase in our wood and yard debris. We actually dipped last year in our calendar year, so we are up again in 2013. Our participation rate in our recycling program, our curbside recycling program continues to blow my mind for our type of area. Even Portland doesn't have quite as good a participation rate in their programs as we do, and with all our vacation rentals and second homes and stuff, this is an outstanding participation rate.
Pardon me, Tina.
Oh, yes.
With that yard and wood waste, does the pulp mill pay for the hog fuel?
Yes.
Thank you.
That we contract that, so we do not haul it, therefore, we do not get paid from the mill. So it is a net loss.
For you.
For us, yes. It is, it's a, you know, a program that we do, and the $6 a yard, we hope, covers the cost. We try to keep it as low as possible to get as much as possible. It's more of a customer service and environmental thing to do than it is anything.
It's a great service. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We're going to talk about it right now. So as you know, if you live in the city limits of Lincoln City and you're a North Lincoln Sanitary customer, you can get a voucher to take a load up to the Schooner Creek Transfer Station once a month. That's one way of getting rid of your wooden yard debris. A couple other ways, we were talking about early before the meeting started, during the summertime, we run a twice-a-week wooden yard debris route, every Monday and Wednesday. And you can do that a couple different ways. You can just put a pile out at your, in front of your home, and we'll pick it up for you. Or you can get one of our temporary containers, like what you see below City Hall here, and those are $15 per pickup, and you're required to have a minimum of two pickups. So those hold about 10 cans of garbage, 11 cans of garbage or wooden yard debris. And then for large jobs, you can get a drop box, and you get a reduced rate on the drop box for wooden yard debris. So we have several different options for all different sizes of jobs. We continue to run that wood route once a week, every Wednesday throughout the whole year, but Memorial Day through Labor Day, it's twice a week. These are all different sorts of things that we accept at the recycling center that we don't take at the curb. On the left-hand side of the page are all the things we take at no charge at the recycling center, and the right-hand side of the page are things that we do accept but for a fee. Indirectly funded services. So I've had a couple of conversations with one or all of you at different times, and with David, about services that we do that anybody can take advantage of, whether you're a rate payer or not. And this is something that we've looked at for the last few years. As you know, or maybe you don't know, Lincoln City has a mandatory garbage ordinance. One of the, there's nine different municipalities in the state that have mandatory garbage. Lincoln City is one of them. However, we have not enforced it for almost 10 years. So this is a little snapshot into what our service level is versus your water customers. So, single-family residences, and these are not exact, because, A, they're a snapshot in time, so we take a snapshot in one day, and B, the way that you guys label your water meters is a little bit different than we label garbage customers. But this is pretty close. There's 5,314 single-family water meters out there and 3,200 garbage customers. There's 752 commercial water meters out there and 634 customers. So I think on the commercial end, we have a really good coverage. The residential end is where it shocks me when I go on, out on the routes with our drivers of, why don't they have service? Why don't they have service? And our drivers, you know, just shake their head and it's like, I don't know, there's people there every day, and we don't know why they don't have service, never have had service. So there is an exemption that you can have, and I believe Debbie got the numbers for us, and I believe there's about 400 exemptions in the city. People that have signed an affidavit that said they either recycle 100% of their garbage, which is not possible, but, or take it home with them if they're part-time residents, or own a business where they have service and take their garbage to their business. I think there's a couple other options on there that they can sign for, so. Diversion programs.
Tina, let me, let me stop there for just a minute.
Sure.
We're, we're going to come back to you and have a more thorough discussion of mandatory trash service and alternatives. And it's, it's a little bit of a complex issue in Lincoln City, because a third of our houses, a third of our housing units are second homes, a third, more or less. I'll give you the exact numbers. So that's where the rub is. That's where, and, and I know North Lincoln Sanitary and Tina have been talking about alternatives and, for example, standby fee and so, are you going to get into that?
We're going to talk about that.
Okay, all right. We'll leave, I'll leave.
So, one of the things I may have not done a very good job on is talking about the indirectly funded services, and I tried to put a couple pictures on here to give you an idea of what we're talking about. The building at the bottom of the screen is open five to six days a week, 12 hours a day, is staffed, and anybody driving down the highway can use that, whether you're a Lincoln City resident, Tillamook County resident, anybody. However, 100% of that building is paid for by the rate payers. So it gets you to thinking when, you know, you start talking about rate increases of how much and how many programs do we want to put on the backs of the rate payers and not on household hazardous waste programs? When we, when we host those, anybody can use those, and we, we're glad that people use them, but again, the rate payers pay for them. The Lincoln County Solid Waste District and their staff and activities is 100% paid for by the rate payers. The paint program, the recycle program, any of those things that you can drop off for free are paid for on the backs of the rate payers. And so it begs the question of, is that how we want to operate? And if it is, that's fine, but I just feel like you should know, and the rate payers should know, that there are people out there getting a free lunch, for lack of a better term. people out there getting a free lunch, for lack of a better term. Diversion is something that we've worked hard to develop things over the last few years, and 90% of this is Lonnie's baby. Latex paint recycling, I...hopefully you remember in 2010, the state passed a product stewardship bill where you can no longer dispose of paint in landfill. You pay a predisposal fee of 75 cents a gallon. And then their idea was to hire a company out of Vancouver, B.C., to manage all of the paint in Portland. And the paint would be collected in local communities. They wanted it at retailers. Our local retailers said, no, thank you, which I don't blame them at all. And then they wanted it hauled to Portland where Portland Metro would recycle the paint and then they sell it through the Miller Paint Stores. I did not think that that was a very good program for the citizens of Lincoln County. I don't know about you, but I'm not going to drive to Portland to buy a gallon of paint. And when you're paying locally, I think it should be available locally. So we worked really hard to get a contract, and we did. And so we collect our paint here, we mix our paint here, and we sell our recycled paint here, which I think is about the best closed-loop system you can do. So twice a year, we mix paint and then have those colors available. We get seven colors, and the program is super popular. In fact, we're completely sold out of paint right now, awaiting enough paint for another mix. Asphalt shingles, we're fortunate enough to have one of the contractor, asphalt contractors in the county that is approved to take these. You can see the pile on the left is what we haul them. They make it into the pile on the right, and then they mix it with their asphalt. It is not approved for roadbeds yet, but they're super close to doing that. Other states it is, but...through ODOT, sorry. But parking lots, driveways, any private asphalt, they can mix in the recycled asphalt shingles. And then construction and demolition waste is an ongoing thing that we are always trying to do a better job at, but we try to set boxes aside that are construction and demolition boxes and sort wood, metal, cardboard out of that. So those numbers continue to grow, and we continue to try to do a better job at sorting them, so. Here's our rate increase. We're asking for a 1% rate increase this year, and if you looked at the rate sheet I provided you, you can tell that not every rate is exactly 1% because years ago, we were asked to round our rates to the nearest quarter. So we're going, for most residential customers, we're going up a quarter, and for our yard-and-a-half customers, we're going up a dollar and a quarter. So that's...those two represent over 80% of the rate payers, so those are the two rates we use. But as you can see from our rate sheets, we have pages and pages of rates to try to accommodate everybody. Compactors and drop boxes, 10-yard compactor, those are the difference in the rates. Again, it's only 1%, so it's not too significant. That's the only slides I have. The last thing on your rate sheet, and Mr. Hawker brought it up earlier, is the change, I guess, that we're asking for this year is on-call service. We have never provided on-call service in Lincoln City because of the mandatory ordinance that says you have to have, pick up a minimum of every two weeks. However, we...since it has not been enforced, we have started offering it to the citizens in Lincoln City because we figured some service is better than no service. And so it's becoming more popular to have on-call service, and so what we're asking is that you approve a base rate of $5 a month that would provide any customer that wants it, a recycle roll cart and a garbage roll cart. And then they could have that picked up whenever they wanted to on the route, and they would have to call for those pickups, and then they would pay a per pickup fee. But that covers the capital costs of the roll carts. It allows them to be in our system, to call any time and to be billed instead of...we do have customers that will just call and say, we'd like a pickup. They have to come into the office and prepay in advance, and it's a pain in the neck for them and us, honestly. So that is a minimum level of service that would help cover the costs of the incidental things that we talked about. And we may bring in more people that don't want to pay a minimum of every other week that just don't have it, but would like that pickup every six weeks or, you know, once every couple months when they come down to their home. So that's the only change in our rate sheets this year. But other than that, it's just across-the-board 1%.
Thank you. Questions from council? Yes.
A good...a question. I don't know, is it a good question or a bad question? Many cities or areas are now combing plastics, you know, plastic bags, glass, the whole work into your recycle bins. Are there...is there anything like that in your...right now, I know.
Not to correct you, but nobody's putting plastic bags in their recycling. Now, glass is in recycling in a couple jurisdictions, one here in Lincoln County. It's really hard to undo something once you do it. And the technology to pull glass out of mixed recycling is much better than it was a year ago, and I sat here. However, I'm not quite ready to make that leap. We really want to make that leap. I think it is a much better service to our customers to do that. I know personally, just at my home, it drives me nuts because I don't have a place to put my glass because I don't have three bins in my kitchen. And so we would love to be able to put glass in the recycle roll cart. We just want to be assured that DEQ is not going to change the rules on that. The jurisdictions that have done it are below 4,000 customer populations, so therefore they are not regulated by DEQ with Senate Bill 66. We do not fall under that. So I can guarantee you, if I wrote you guys a letter and said, we'd like to start putting glass in our recycle roll carts, DEQ would be knocking on your door saying, do not do it. Now, that doesn't mean that you have to listen to them, but they are going to strongly...at this time, DEQ does not want it in. Now, whether it's environmentally good to be in or out is an argument for another day. But there is a new facility in Portland that optically sorts the glass color. So we are no longer hauling source-separated glass loads to Portland. We're hauling, I don't know if you noticed, the box out at Otis or the ones in the recycling center or the ones in Depot Bay are no longer one color. They're three colors because we want all the brown, green, and clear to go together. And there's a mill in Portland now called E. Collet, and it sorts it. And we got the opportunity to visit it right after opening, and it is amazing. It's like a gobstopper machine. It all goes in one end, and out the other end is a clear pile, a green pile, and a brown pile. And it is clean. And so I'm thinking that that is going to change the environment of glass in the recycling because that was one of the problems, is that you put glass in the recycling, it breaks in the recycling, there's no way to sort it by color, it's dangerous. But that is definitely one big leap forward in being able to put glass in.
Just to add one thing, the biggest...they can get the glass out of the recycling, but then it's not clean enough to recycle it as glass, so it gets used as something else typically.
Right. And then on your recycle trucks, you don't have the ability to pick up just glass by itself, even if it was separated?
No, that's the problem, is that there's not a truck out there that can have the density of the routes that we need that have another hopper for the glass. Now that we don't have to sort glass separately, if we were to buy another recycle truck, that would be something that we'd possibly look at, is a split-body truck that mixed glass could go into. We definitely do not want to run another route. The sustainability of that is atrocious, obviously, but the, you know, possibly having a hopper on the truck body manufactured for glass is a possibility in the future. I think we'll see glass in the recycle roll cart before we have to do that. Plastic bags, I don't see that happening for a long time because of the way the screens work in the material recovery facilities, they're star screens, they capture those bags, they get wound up. They have to shut their lines down about every six hours and take big blades in and cut all those bags off, and it...
Still, still today?
Yep. It's really bad.
Yeah.
That's why we try to make sure we accept them at our recycling center, which, and most grocery stores still accept them. I can tell you, if you bring them to us, I know that they get made back into lumber or...and the market for those bags is actually terrific. The companies that are making stuff out of those bags are begging for them, but...
Not when they have to clean it off the screen, it's too...
Yeah, that's...then it's garbage.
That makes sense.
So the stuff that's coming off of the screens at the material recovery facility is going straight to the landfill.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question, Tina. Someone told me that if you can see through plastic, it's okay to recycle, but if you can't see through it, it's not. Is that correct?
So film plastic, you should be able to stretch it like a grocery bag, and you should...I don't know about the see-through.
Yeah, if it's like...
When you stretch it, if you can see through it?
Like black polyplastic, that's not recyclable. But like a grocery bag that's kind of opaque, you can still see through it a little bit.
Or even a black garbage bag, you know, when you stretch it, you can see through it, it's fine. I'm trying to think of a plastic that...FedEx bags that don't stretch, that type of plastic is not recyclable. Tyvek.
I was also thinking about these milk, half-gallon milk containers, you know, you can't see through them, but they're plastic. Is that okay to...
Oh, yeah. Plastic containers is a completely different story. One through five containers and bottles are always recyclable, and those are a high, high-value plastic. So film plastic is its own animal completely.
Okay, that's what I was talking about.
Oh, sorry. No, no, all plastic, one through five, is recyclable. Containers, trays, tubs.
All right. Thank you.
And Tina, I'm disappointed because usually you show that chart of the graph that, you know, we use for our economic analysis of, what is it, trash and wood and recycle, kind of a...
Right. You know what?
You may have to sit back.
I was asked to keep it short tonight by somebody in the room, and so I actually cut about four slides out of my presentation.
All right. But I heard you verbally say that Lincoln City is doing a great job and outstanding job in the recycling, and that's to be commended, the citizens. Could we talk a bit, I guess, I like the idea of an on-call service. I would look to...Rocco, I guess that would mean, and Mr. Avichill, we'd have to change the ordinance or not?
I don't believe so.
In order to legitimize...
I don't believe so.
Well, your ordinance right now says a minimum of every other week, so it would be my recommendation to change the ordinance, personally. And maybe you don't want to, but...
Well, that's just another level of service that they can have.
Except that your ordinance says that any customer shall have a minimum of two...
Yeah, and we...actually, we need to talk about what...I would like that to go into effect as soon as possible, but I want to come back and talk to council about the mandatory service, the issues all surrounding that. I'd like to have you come back, if you can, for that.
Oh, absolutely.
Maybe at the next meeting or the following one. And if we need to change the ordinance, and I guess, Richard, you need to...
I'm never adverse to changing an ordinance. You haven't been shy about it yet, while...
Yeah, you have been, that's right.
But I guess I want to make sure we have that discussion about mandatory trash service before we do that.
Before we do the on-call or...
Well, before we change the ordinance, so if that means...
And full disclosure, we have been offering on-call service to Lincoln City residents for nine months, and we have a few.
And I don't know why we can't continue that. That's, to me, a little bit separate from the mandatory...I mean...
I agree.
It's a chicken or an egg thing to some extent.
They're related, quite obviously.
Right. But, I mean, one of the other benefits to, you know, some level of mandatory service is, obviously, the more you spread the costs out, the less expensive solid waste for the entire city is. And, you know, everybody uses some sort of solid waste service, whether it's pulling into the recycling center, you know, illegally dumping.
And could you remind me of what we're paying as rate payers or through, for the tonnage fee for solid waste district?
I don't have it broke down per customer, obviously, but we pay $4 a ton to the solid waste district, which comes out to anywhere between $70,000 to $90,000 a year, depending on tonnages, obviously.
Great, thank you. Other questions? Because we will deal with this with the resolution further on in a public comment.
Just one. You're taking the refuse from here to Pilot Butte, is that right?
Coffin Butte.
I mean Coffin Butte.
In Adair Village outside of Carvallos.
How long are they going to be able to continue to do that?
They're talking that they have...could be permitted for up to 120 years.
Oh, my gosh.
They have quite a footprint that they can...I mean...
The period right now, though, is like 30...
They're 30, 35 years currently. But they have grandiose plans. The north end is the landfill, and then there's a road, I don't know what the name of the road is, that goes back there. And then their offices are on the south end, and they actually could abandon that road and go all the way and fill that entire valley.
Wow. Yeah. And are they collecting and utilizing methane, Tina?
Yes, they are. They actually have a really aggressive methane recovery program. You can see it right there on the highway where their generators are. They've added, just in the time that we've been hauling there, they've added two generators. I think they're up to five generators now and powering over 3,000 homes, the entire city of Adair, and maybe some more to the city of Carvallos.
But that's kind of...I didn't know if I wanted to mention this or not, but I was half-waiting for somebody to bring up the issue of mandatory composting as Newport has implemented. And I just wanted to throw out that, at least for now, I'm not in favor of that for a lot of reasons. The cost, the amount of fuel that it takes to do that, and the methane, which composting, unless it's required to do methane capture, is bad news. Home composting is not, if you turn your compost, you're getting oxygen in it, you're not making methane. But big compost, commercial compost operations are probably generating methane that's not being recycled, reused. And the science behind that is methane is thought to be somewhere between 30 and 100 times worse than the carbon dioxide as a greenhouse gas. So it's bad news stuff. And so anyway, I'm by no means in favor of mandatory composting pickup by North Lincoln Sanitary, nor have they suggested it.
One of the things to stick up for Newport a little bit is they had to answer a big problem with Walmart. Walmart corporate-wide required their stores to start composting, which I sit on the Board of Directors for the Oregon Refuge and Recycling, and we spent a lot of money trying to figure out how to deal with this problem. And so while Thompson Sanitary was going to have to pick up composting for Walmart, and you can imagine the costs for just one customer, and the trips back and forth to Carvallos for just one customer. So that was the thing that really spurred their thing. Had they not had a Walmart in Newport, I don't think they would be doing it today, honestly.
The compost facility is right across from the landfill, that's why she said Carvallos.
Yeah. PRC is the name of the compost facility, still owned by Republic Services, but it's across Highway 99 from the landfill.
And is that successful? Do they have a...end a product that they're able to sell?
They do have a product that they're able to sell. The market is a bit inundated right now because of Portland's composting program, which has been a challenge. As you know, Portland went to every other week garbage only and added a compost cart and a recycle roll cart, which they had. They've had incredible problems with their compost being contaminated with diapers, adult diapers. It's basically an overflow for the garbage since you are not allowed to have any more than every other week garbage. And so it's been a problem, and they do, the contamination is an issue.
Other questions, comments? It's always very enlightening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. All right, our next order of business is interim city manager contract. All right. Our next order of business is interim city manager contract.
I just want to point out, there was a typo in the one that was in the packet that's been corrected about the number of years. It's not a hundred-year contract.
Okay. Counsel, obviously, this came in the packet to take a look at and read through. Any questions, concerns, discussion item?
Mr. Mayor?
You bet.
I just think that it's a well-thought-out process, and I'm comfortable with it.
As am I, Mr. Mayor.
Not only is it well-thought-out, I'd like to thank the city manager for agreeing to sit in while... and help us while we go through this very important transition. So thank you, Mr. Hocker.
I would agree with the comments. What this does actually is give some finiteness to all of us, including Mr. Hocker, of, in essence, putting a flag in the ground of retiring at the end of the year. And it allows us as council to get ahead of the curve, do the recruiting, do the requests for future city manager without being in a twix under the gun. And I think that's real important. And so that's, you know, what we've tried to do is design here that ability for us to get started and hire a city manager, new cities' manager by year-end. And as you can see by the contract, we've asked Mr. Hocker to be interim city manager, because our bet, my bet, is that if we're fortunate enough to find the right individual and have them hired in 2014, they won't physically be able to be here in 2014. So the right person that you'd hire wouldn't want to leave their city in a lurch, so I'm betting at least a couple of months. And what we've negotiated with Mr. Hocker is his ability to stay on then as an interim, and then, once the new city manager is hired, to be at the disposal, that can call of the city manager, new city manager, to act as a resource individual, special projects, and provide information for someone new to the community. So to me, it's a win-win for both Mr. Hocker, and certainly the city council, and the citizens of Lincoln City.
You're here.
So...
Mayor, I had just a couple of comments. I think both sides of this, me and the city council and the mayor, I think a lot of people remember that in the budget message, I said I would be out... I would be retiring one to two years, and that was... that came out in April of this year. That got moved up some for the simple reason of guaranteeing a transition. If I would wait until, let's say, next April and decide to pull the plug at that point, I'm giving you what notice is required, and I'm out of here. That means a couple of things. That means that you're going to have an interim for a while, and I wouldn't be able to assist in the transition and/or even the recruitment. So we sat down together and devised this plan to what I think will come pretty close to guaranteeing a smooth transition. And that's the whole idea of this whole thing.
Agreed. So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to share with the public what a protracted process this is selecting a new city manager and why we feel the need for an interim city manager with the experience that Mr. Hocker has. We're going to require considerable time to advertise, recruit, screen, interview, select, hire, and relocate a city manager. That's going to take time, and I certainly welcome the help.
And I would say there would be certainly public opportunities throughout this process for input, and once we get to the selection process of providing town hall meetings, something where the citizenry will have the opportunity to meet the candidates and question and that kind of stuff. So the action required is a motion to approve?
I would so move.
Sick? We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Sprague?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Quandt?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Then it comes to the question. Next item is the appointment of a council committee for the actual search. And maybe, Mr. Hocker, you could share with us some of the process?
Well, as you know, I've very strongly recommended in the budget that the city use a recruiter, might commonly refer to as a quote "headhunter," headhunter firm. There is fewer and fewer qualified candidates, for some reason, that are interested in this kind of work. I don't know why. It's just a bundle of fun.
Yeah.
But it's true. It's literally true. Where 10, 15 years ago, we used to have 100 candidates, of which 20 were well-qualified. In this day and age, you're lucky to get, without, at least without a recruiter, you're lucky to get one well-qualified candidate. And sometimes you'll get four or five. Recruiters go after that market of people that are working and not necessarily looking for a position, where advertising gets you those that are out of work or unhappy in the position that they're in and looking. So they widen the market quite a bit. Plus, they have a lot of exposure to many of these candidates. They know what they are already. And they have good processes and good abilities to check into backgrounds and so on. And I think, for the price, it's really, really worth using one of these firms. Without trying to stroke my own ego, I will tell you that this is an important position for the city. And a good city manager versus a ho-hum city manager is a big difference. And a bad city manager is bad news. And we can talk about over the years that that decision is a million-dollar decision by any way you want to cut it. So to spend $40,000, $50,000 on a recruiting firm, when you're making literally a million-dollar or a $5 million decision, is, to me, a very wise investment. So I think the first thing that a committee could do would be to select, sit down and look at the qualifications of a couple of headhunters, a couple of recruiting firms, pick one. I can, under my purchasing authority and under the budget, I can then contract with that to do what that committee has outlined for them to do. And then kind of like work with the initial... with a headhunter on the initial steps of the process. Now, obviously, at some point, there's others that are going to be involved, and the whole council will have to make the decision. The council, as a group, will, of course, all be involved in the process at some point. But I think the early stages need not involve the whole council, but that's your choice.
And that would really be, what I hear you saying is, the subgroup or committee, select a recruiter and work with them until we get to the, maybe funneling down applications or even through the application process?
I think you need to look closer at that and talk with the recruiter and say, at what point do we bring in different groups, okay? And that would be your decision. And you can always come back to council and say, here's the plan, what do you think? Okay? So I would urge you first to get a recruiter that you're really comfortable with, and get them on the clock, and let them, as professionals who do nothing else but advise you. And they do this, for the most part, the ones that I've invited, for local governments. So I think they're going to give you good advice.
Sounds good. Counsel, I'm thinking, you know, as three of us, perhaps, you could make up this committee and kind of leaning towards one, myself, but then the two of either Roger, Wes, and Chester being counselors that will be in 2015, would like to have them, if you don't mind, involved. But I don't want to go with four. I think I need to be part of that process, and so would need to maybe self-eliminate one of the other counselors.
If you're talking about having a formal subcommittee make a decision or make a recommendation, then we're going to comply with public meetings law anyway, so it doesn't matter if it's three or four.
Oh, okay.
Because we'll advertise that we're... you're having a subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
But they could do that as a... an ad hoc committee that... I guess I'm trying to see that you have a choice, that would make individual... have a group but have individual recommendations to the entire council.
You're correct. There is that provision in the law, but it just means you make individual recommendations. So it's kind of hard to do if you want to have a subcommittee meet and talk. I'm always going to recommend the public process.
Process, okay.
And I will point out that, you know, as you go through the process of hiring a chief executive officer, you typically, you know, have to develop hiring standards, criteria, and policy directives, and you usually bring those to a public meeting and ask for public comment about those. So again, it's kind of unique to that top job, but when you're doing that, you do have a public involvement process.
Okay, good. It makes sense, Mr. Mayor. If you're going to add or make a committee that... to work on this, that the three continue on past this year would be involved, and you want to be involved as well, then that would be your committee of four. Well, I was trying to avoid the group of four, but I can see now that if we're going to have to publicize it and everything anyway, then, you know, it'd be... So unless, you know, are you two okay with...
We are.
I am.
Okay. So is there any... this would be the time for the three of you, if anybody wants to opt out, you'd be involved. So, okay, so if we can, set that up with the four of us.
I will...
Do what we need.
I or David, if you approve that by motion, I'll have David Twig contact you for some dates where we can get together and review the proposals and so on.
Okay.
So each time that we would meet then as a committee, we need to advertise two weeks prior? Is that the way it goes?
It's not two weeks. It's just, you know...
For a week or whatever.
It's easier to comply with public meetings law than to, you know, violate public meetings law. You should... it's not that hard to violate... it's not that hard to comply with public meetings law. Reasonable notice to the newspaper that you're having a meeting, and we're good. There's no three weeks ahead of time kind of deadline.
And if you continue the meeting, you still have to advertise that the meeting is going to meet at a certain time?
Generally, we'll... yeah, generally, we'll give notice to the newspapers. It's not like a public hearing where we're putting ads in the papers saying we're having a public hearing on this date. It's not like that.
All right. Well, why don't, if I could entertain a motion to form this, what would we call it, council committee for city manager search, committee comprised...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would suggest that one of the two counselors that won't be part of that committee should make that motion.
So moved.
I'll second it. And the motion would include such things as the committee members would be, you know, Mr. Sprague, Norakis, Wes Ryan, and myself.
So moved.
Second time.
Okay.
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you. This... now we go to public comment, and this is the opportunity for the public to comment on the proposed increase in rates for the North Lincoln Sanitary Service. If anyone in the audience wishes to make a comment, that would be the time to come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment, period, and move to city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe I'm... I'm trying to get back to the cover sheet. I believe I only have one item on here. Is that correct?
Property purchase in Agnes Creek Thinning Project update.
Yes. We have another bordering... we have another single-family home bordering the Lincoln Square complex here. And as you probably know, that we squeeze onto a rather small footprint. We're right up against residential areas. We have very limited parking. That we are always looking to see what we can do to expand that holding in a useful kind of way for the future, and at the same time, to provide workforce housing opportunities. And there is a property that borders Lincoln Square. It is on the market for $129,000. And we've been in discussions with the realtor representing the owner about that, and have gone back and forth with a number of offers that would be conditional on your approval and conditional on an inspection, and of course, you know, a clean title report. And finally, we settled on today on a final price of $110,000, and that's about the peak of what I can recommend for this property. It's 1132 Southwest Ninth Street. It's a nice property. It's in relatively good shape. It can be used as workforce housing for a number of years until it's needed for other use and buffer for this complex. So what I'm asking for is your authority to sign a contract to acquire the house and to go through the closing process. Richard, can you help me there with a motion?
I authorize the purchase of the property and authorize the city manager to sign all necessary documents.
Yeah, that's it.
You mentioned a contract. We aren't going to buy it on a contract, are we?
No, it's a cash sale.
Pardon?
Cash. We're not buying it over time or anything. It's a cash deal.
Oh, excuse me. You said something about signing the contract, and I thought...
Well, before, I mean...
Contract sale. I didn't see... that didn't make sense.
There's a contract that says we have contingencies, this clean title report, that inspection, and all that stuff.
I would so move. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion with a second. Discussion. I think, as Mr. Hocker indicated, the primary use is to availability for parking for this complex. And we've seen that occur previously where we own another property for future expansion. But we've also seen the difficulty it is for parking in this complex when there's events and, actually, just every day at times, it's quite congested.
And we still have a vast amount of unused space on the fourth floor that someday is going to be used. And we really can't even think about that without additional parking.
So I don't know that I could be hold strong voting in favor just for parking. I think the key here is it's got a useful life yet for actual housing and would be used until we needed housing, and that's a big plus for me. I would support that. So...
Well, and it's also a real positive aid for the city to be able to have a place for potential employees to live until they can get settled here in Lincoln City.
Oh, it's a strong recruiting tool. Sometimes we use housing like this for... in place of paying... Sometimes we use housing like this for, in place of paying a relocation, say, "Well, instead of paying your move, we'll offer you free use of this for X number of months." Other times, we rent it a little below market, report the difference as income. But what it's done for us, these kind of homes, we own two currently. One was donated to us by a city employee who no longer is here, and the other one we purchased, which is adjacent to this complex. The number of employees that have come through this on the transitional home that ended up buying a home in Lincoln City, when the majority of employees that we hire who are not already in Lincoln City buy out of the area. So, once they get to know Lincoln City, live in Lincoln City for three or four months in one of our homes, they've tended to buy here. And that really makes me happy, because the more city employees we have that live and work in the same city, the better. And that's certainly going to be true in an emergency.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion with a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you very much. Cut, Mr. Hawker.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, that's all right, Josh. Agnes Creek.
We've completed or nearly completed the second side of Agnes Creek, the one that's north of Bard Road. And I would love to show this off a little bit, what's been done to invite the council and the, and the public, because we would advertise it some Monday afternoon. And it's, we'd advertise it as a meeting in case a number of you showed up, but of course, it's not part of a decision-making process right now. We would like to continue this type of forest enhancement project in the future, probably next with Spyglass. And so, there will be a decision coming along late this year to maybe get the next project going. So, there is a decision process coming, but I think you don't need to do a tour to make that decision. But I'd love it if you would. And Mark Miller, our consulting forester, is excellent at doing this, and it's a, it's a great way to learn about our local open spaces and our local forests. So, I'd ask if you would consider just fixing a date on one of our next Mondays. Mark said he's free any of the next five Mondays, but have a conference call on August 11th from 3:00 to 4:00. So, again, it's not a mandatory, quote "mandatory" meeting, but I'd like to pick a date when more of council than not could attend if they so chose.
And council might recall that we did a similar thing with the Agnes Creek South project and walked through after the completion of that project and just to get educated and familiar.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would point out that we have a special council meeting on, at 3:00 on the 18th.
Yeah, so, the 11th, 18th, and 15th have council meetings right now, or 25th. Is it, did you say it was okay to do earlier?
Yeah, I mean.
I'm wondering about the 11th or the 25th of just.
11th would be better.
Doing something mid-afternoon?
City has a conference call, but I imagine he can do that from here, so we could do it early afternoon on the 11th.
That, if, why don't we, that'd be great, if, early, yeah.
How about 2:00?
That might be a stretch to complete in an hour.
We've got a board meeting at noon, and it goes till 1:00 or so.
How about 1:30?
1:30 would be all right.
Let me, if that's okay, let me make that a tentative, and I'll get a confirmation.
Okay.
August 11, 1:30?
Yep.
Is there a parking place there with the new side of the?
Yeah, they're making one there, although we will run a van from here, and I'll, of course, put that in the announcement. And we'll make sure the public is aware of it, too. I hope some of the public would come and see, we have 300 acres of open space, and some of that is, are large parcels, like 60 acres of Agnes Creek, like 70 acres of Spyglass, like 60 acres in one of the village's parcel, 40 in another. We have some big parcels behind Buy Mart, another 15 acres, and so on and so on. And these need, these need some maintenance, but this kind of maintenance is paying for itself, and maybe a little bit extra. Mayor, the only other item I had was to mention that the water truck that didn't, wasn't marked as surplus will be coming back to you as surplus. It is a replacement truck.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I had.
Great. Mr. Appicello, I know you've got ordinance next, but do you have anything outside of that?
No, sir.
All right, well, then, let's go ahead and go to that ordinance item. Before, one second, Mr. Hawker.
I'll wait till you get back, Mr. Hawker. Go ahead.
I was, I was looking for a Nell Scott update.
Sorry, I'm not the one to do that. Lila?
I just drive through it every day.
Well, how about an update?
Okay.
That's our update.
Okay, except for the weekends, the daytime traffic, I feel, is moving a little bit better than it was, and I think once the dirt haul is done, and it's very close to being done, and that's during the day, what has, to me, been slowing things down is that when a truck pulls out loaded for dirt, loaded with dirt, and wants to pull out on the highway, they stop the traffic. And each time they stop it, it backs up more and more. They're almost done with that kind of hauling, and I believe that there's less of it now, and the traffic's moving a little bit better. But that's about all I can report.
Yeah, it's on the truck traffic, they're stopping that at 10:30 in the morning, so they're doing it real early, and then, and then they're not flagging trucks into the right-of-way after 10:30. And they're also not working Sunday nights, and they're, I think they're getting close with the culvert on the east side at 29th Street. And so, they've, and they paved paths on the west side for people to walk, and they opened that section up, so there's more room for pedestrians and bicyclists. And so, they do have 32nd, Southwest 32nd closed, and they're doing the large culvert under 32nd Street and sewer and water lines, which were in their contract. And then, what they'll do is repave and move at 29th Street, move the street back to the east side, and finish the west side. So, a lot of work, a lot of work still going on. They're doing quite a bit of work on the east side on the new portion of 32nd Street.
I think people need to remember, this is the summertime where our traffic does increase, and always during a construction site, I've found there's a lot of looky-loos that help with the slowdown of traffic. So, it's a nice safety issue.
Right. But it does back traffic up. And there is, you know, there's always slow traffic, and I talked to some of the business owners in Taft, and they were saying, you know, every summer, it's like this whether there's construction or not. But I think people do like to look at the project, too. It's very interesting.
It is, yeah. Other questions on the?
I had a quick question. Are they running on time or a little upcut of time? I mean, we've had some fantastic weather, and I'm.
I think they're on time. You know, we meet with them, they have a meeting every Tuesday when we were doing our project, and then they've continued that, so we have an engineer at that meeting, and then if we have issues, we always bring them up. So, any complaints that we get from customers, you know, we respond to real quickly. But 32nd will be closed until the end of August, 31st of August, so.
Okay.
I want to compliment the people driving through that area, because, for some reason, they're very, very courteous. They're letting people come in from the side. I know frequently, I've come down from, past Fung Hing Yuen there, past, from Spyglass, and people just let you in right away. I just think it's great.
I saw that today, so.
Good. All right? Thank you.
Okay.
All right, let's move then to the ordinance, ordinance number 2014-18.
This is first reading of an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Title 17, zoning, Chapter 1720, multiple-family residential RM zone, amending Section 1720-050, minimum lot area and density requirements, and Section 1720-100, other required conditions relating to standards for multifamily housing developments. We're looking for a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2014-18 and set second reading for August 11th, authorize receipt of written comments and to the record noon on August 6th.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion with a second, further discussion? This was, talked a lot about, we had as a discussion item, I think, last meeting, and this has been cleaned up and brought back. Any questions generated from the ordinance? You're all right? Okay. Looking down the line. Roll call, please.
Ryan?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is there any reason why we can't do second reading now?
Typically, on a land use ordinance, we don't do that.
Okay. Let it pass. Thank you. Then we have resolution, resolution number 2014-21, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City adopting an increase in the rates for North Lincoln Sanitary Service.
I would so move that we adopt resolution 2014-21.
Seconded.
We have a motion with a second to approve, further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
All right. Norakis?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. And then, again, this would be a time for comments from citizens present, if anybody in the audience wishes to make a comment, now would be the time. Seeing none, we'll move to council. Counselors, any comments? Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to let you know now that I will not be here on August 11. Will be watching possibly a whole flock of people trying to get the roles in our newest play, will be in October, which I'll be directing, Man with a Plastic Sandwich.
All right. We'll mark you down as a no-show. Okay. Mr. Norakis?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Henry?
Nothing.
Gordy?
Nothing.
Gosh.
Surprisingly, I have nothing.
Nothing. All right. The only thing I have is to remind you that we've got three meetings in August, the 11th, 18th, and 25th. The 18th is at 3:00 p.m., so please make sure your calendars are so marked. With that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
11.